Good afternoon. We'd like to call this meeting to order, a meeting, it's a staff meeting of the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners, July 16, 2019. We've got a presentation on the agenda, first up, from Careco. We have all received information from them, it should be at your seat. And Careco is doing great things in the community, and so they wanted to have an opportunity to present not only the work they're doing, but also some of what they're doing in partnership with Hamilton County. So with that, I would like to bring both of you up, please, to the dais. It's Rena Saperstein and Linda Seider. Welcome.
Thank you so much for putting us on the agenda today to talk about what we do and our connection with Hamilton County. So first of all, just an overview of HIV/AIDS in Hamilton County. Over the past several years, up until fairly recently, we've had a slight increase in HIV. The bulk of the new cases in recent years, up until the last two or three, have been men who have sex with men, not all, but clearly that has been the bulk of the new cases. What I think is important to note, but in 2013, there began to be a shift. 10% of the new cases in Hamilton County, and again, these are only new cases of HIV, were directly attributable to injection drug use. And then in 2018, again, out of the new diagnoses for HIV, 35% were attributable to injection drug use. So that was a huge increase, and one is, it's a great concern to us. So the trajectory in other cities, and you may know this, but, you know, is an overprescription of opioids, followed by cheap and available heroin, and influx of heroin, an increase in hepatitis C, which half of the people we test now, and these are high-risk people, but half of the people that we test are positive for hepatitis C, and then an increase in HIV. That's happened in New York, San Francisco, Los Angeles, Baltimore, that same trajectory. And that's where we are today.
So Careco, in case you don't know us, but you do, the name stands for Shell That Grows and Protects, that grows with you. We have traditionally, we've been around for over 30 years, we traditionally have three major lines of operation or services. The case management, or care, prevention, and housing. So within case management, you'll see that in our annual report and in our brochures, we're talking about helping people with access to the medical services they need, to the medicine and pharmaceuticals that they need. We're not a medical provider, but there's so much involved in just getting things paid for, getting through all the tests and the doctor visits, and then all the other stabilization that you need in order to be healthy. And that can include help with financial needs, mental health needs, addiction needs, how do I tell my family about this needs, all those kinds of needs. And so case management is our core, and there's about 1,500 people in case management at Careco. Then a smaller subset of those 1,500, one of their core needs is housing, as you know, affordable housing being a key issue for people, and housing is healthcare. If you don't have a stable place to live, you can't get well, you can't treat your medical needs, as we all know. So about 150 people are receiving housing services through Careco, and that varies between a little bit of help in an emergency situation with your rent, to a housing voucher program similar to, but not Section 8, where people can receive a portion of their rent paid for in an inspected apartment, to some residential units that we actually control, and those vary depending on the needs that we have. So we have actually apartment units that we have as well. And then prevention is our biggest growing, and that deals with both testing for HIV and Hep C, awareness and education about safe sex, and about safe drug injection, and about other safety practices that can help people avoid contracting HIV. I would say that our case management and housing also is a prevention service, because if you get medically treated properly, and your viral load reduces as you have access to medication, after a while, if your viral load is controlled, then you can become less infectious to others. So it's also a preventive measure to treat people who have HIV, because they will also be untransmittable at some point when they're healthy enough. So then prevention also includes participation with the Hamilton County Exchange Project in syringe services, and a lot of health education going out with our van right in front of the public library and all other places, offering people an HIV test, which is not only a test, but also an opportunity for conversation about what are your risk factors, and what are you doing about those risk factors. So that's our traditional services, and we've partnered with Hamilton County, and Linda will talk a little bit about how we've done some of that.
Thank you. So those are our core services that we provide, and over the last year, we've added a lot of new services, just to talk about that for a moment. As of, hopefully, the end of today, I have a funding meeting after this, we're likely to be increasing our permanent supportive housing units by the end of this year to 35 more units, which means we'd go from 150 to 185 permanent supportive housing units, and there is clearly a need. We also have really embraced the concept of harm reduction, and we've become a leader in this community in terms of promoting harm reduction and weaving that into our services. And one example of that change is, we really have adapted and embraced the Housing First initiative that HUD is encouraged, and clearly Strategies to End Homelessness, which is one of our partners. The idea being that, the old way used to be, you know, if someone would come to us and they needed housing, and they were a substance abuser, or they were severely mentally ill, we would say, "Go get treatment, and then we'll house you." And then people would disappear. And we ended up serving, you know, people that were not necessarily the high-need people that should be targeted by these programs. So we flipped that model on its side, and basically now, what we do is, if someone presents to us, and they're a substance abuser, or they're severely mentally ill, or they've been out of medical care, the first thing we do, as Rena mentioned, is we house them. We put a roof over their head, we build a relationship, and then we start to work on all those other issues. So that's Housing First. As Rena mentioned, also, we are partnering with Hamilton County Health. We're operating the, Hamilton County's first site-based syringe exchange, and that's our site in Northside. The other sites are via the mobile van that Hamilton County Health uses, which is great, but the CDC recommended that there also be a site-based program, and so we've taken that on. And we also are the only program that has evening hours. And this is completely new, we just started last Thursday. We had two people come, which is, we think is a great start. So it'll build slowly, we're excited about that. And then the other new initiative we have, and you'll be seeing a lot about this in the community, is there's a drug called Truvata that's used to treat HIV, and basically, the CDC is encouraging people who engage in risky behavior, or, you know, people at risk for HIV, to basically take this drug as a pre-exposure prophylaxis drug. So in other words, someone who is a sex worker, or someone who is, you know, having, engaging in high-risk sex and only uses a condom 50% of the time, or an injection drug user could have access to this drug, and it would prevent HIV. So, you know, it helps that person obviously not become positive, but it also helps the community in terms of just, you know, harm reduction for us all. So this, we got a special grant that just started in April from the Ohio Department of Health. We've hired two full-time specialists to help people get access to PrEP, and it also includes payment for this very, very expensive drug. So we're really excited about that. So we work closely with Hamilton County Health in particular, and they fund our prevention program, a piece of it anyway, particularly around HIV and hepatitis C testing, and the mobile van that Rena mentioned, that you'll see downtown parked in various places. And that's a huge part of our prevention services, so that partnership is really important to us. And then we're also partnering with them, with, like I said, our newest syringe exchange program, it is a partnership. We provide the staff and the location, and turn the lights on and everything else, and then Hamilton County Health has trained us, taught us how to do the exchange, how to engage people in services, and they're providing all the supplies for us. So we're really excited about that. So that's how we work together, and, you know, we were also interested in, do you see any gaps in services, or anything that you would be interested, from where you sit, in terms of new initiatives that we might look at taking on? We're really interested in feedback, we're an agency, we've grown from a tiny, small housing agency to a multi-service agency, serving literally 20 counties in the region. But we're not afraid of new things, and, you know, we're always looking ahead and seeing, you know, here's what people need today, but in the HIV field, in five years, it could look very, very different. I mean, we could even have a vaccine then, who knows? But, you know, until then, what are the gaps in services, and how can we meet those needs? So any feedback or ideas are definitely appreciated. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation. I just have a couple of things, and then I'll kick it around a little bit. So I was just wondering, first of all, thank you for the partnership with Hamilton County. The exchange program is, I think, while it's about the health of the individuals and the health community, it's also about getting people into recovery, and having that opportunity when they come in, to engage with them and try to get them into treatment and long-term recovery. So thank you for your help with that. Have you seen any, anything notable by way of the demographics of the individuals that you are serving, and any trends? You've been at this for quite some time. What are you seeing out in the community as far as, who is at risk at this moment in time, and has that changed from who used to be at risk in the past?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. As Linda said, the risk, so there's two major risk factors, right? There's sexually transmitted HIV and Hep C, and then there's injection drug use, HIV and Hep C are the two main risk factors. And the change has been from mainly sexually transmitted to mainly, or most of the growth in substance users. And so what that means is, it's no longer as gender-specific, more women than in the past. It's also both rural and urban, which is new, and racially more diverse perhaps than it has been in the past. So those are all big changes. Means, if you're talking about the traditional who's at risk, it was young African-American men under 35, or young Hispanic, Latinx men under 35. That's still a risk, demographically a risk group, but there's so many other people now who are also at risk in different ways. So that's been a change. I would say also, and I say it because the prosecutor's office is here, we also have a special program now with a grant to have three staff who just go out to outreach to injection drug users, to people who use injection drugs, which means they are going to some places where illegal activity is occurring, and they're providing information about harm reduction. So if you can get into treatment, you want to go into treatment, we'll take you to treatment. They've driven people to Lexington for treatment even, but if you're not ready for treatment yet, let's make sure that you are using clean equipment, that you're not sharing equipment, and that you know what your medical resources are that are available to you. And that's, that's a new program as well, where they're just, you know, they'll take people from the drop-in center to a treatment facility, or to a medical provider if they need to do that. So that's new as well.
Have you seen any change in the age of the individuals that you're seeing?
I don't have that info.
No, not yet.
Okay.
Not yet.
Just curious. Thank you. Any other comments or questions, Commissioner Demis?
Yeah, just a couple comments. Thank you for all you do, and this is a very comprehensive annual report. I'll take time and read it, and of course, I can contact either one of you for any questions. Just wondering, I hear about your funding, and Hamilton County Health provides some monies, and then you got a grant for the mental, mental health, your grant that you just recently got. Who are your primary funders for this project?
The Ohio Department of Health.
Okay.
Through the Ryan White HIV program.
Uh huh.
And then also, we receive three different pots of HUD money.
Oh, okay. Good.
And then another revenue source are pharmacy services. We have a mail-order pharmacy, and with the income we generate with that, we pay 100% of the co-pays for anyone who enrolls.
Okay. So has your lot been increased because of the increased need for it? Have you seen a major increase?
We have, particularly through the Ohio Department of Health. The initiative for the pre-exposure prophylaxis, then the harm reduction program that Rena just talked about for injection drug users, those are totally new programs funded by the Ohio Department of Health.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Portman?
Madam President, thank you. Thank you so much for your report, and all the detail and the update and everything, it's just, you know, we go back a long way, and it's great to see how Careco has grown in the services provided, and the outreach, and the geographic area of coverage. You know, our focus, of course, is on Hamilton County, but we live in a larger region, and people travel freely throughout that region, so it's great to see that kind of expansive coverage. One question about the needle exchange program. Historically, there was a lot of reticence to embark on that for a variety of reasons. We don't need to go into all of them at this point. But since the introduction of the program and the funding that you've been able to receive, and the work through Hamilton County General Health District, Commissioner Ingram, I know, has been on the forefront of that as well, and don't want to not acknowledge his great work in this field also, and being a promoter of the needle exchange program. Have you seen attitudes change around that?
Oh, absolutely.
That's great.
I have been amazed.
So can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, so we have a board member, Dr. Judith Feinberg, who since has moved to West Virginia, but she was on the forefront of really encouraging syringe exchange and educating our community about it 10 years ago, and the reaction then was just, people were very closed, saw it as enabling, had a lot of misconceptions about what the exchange would be like. And now, it's so interesting, because, you know, our program just started last week, so I've been talking about it wherever I go, and people are like, "Oh, I heard you're doing syringe exchange, that's fantastic." It's become mainstream.
Yeah.
And I have just been so surprised by the support we've received. So you're right, Commissioner Ingram and other people have done all the hard work to pave the way for us to start this program. It's been easy, actually.
That's great. I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah.
You know, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge now Judge, former Ohio State Senator and Cincinnati Councilmember Tyrone Yates.
Absolutely, yes.
Judge Yates, when he and I served on city council back in the 90s, he was a strong proponent of a needle exchange program. He encountered incredible opposition at that time, vilification and other things, and yet he was right then, and has been proven right since. So I'm really glad to hear how attitudes have evolved over the years.
Oh, they absolutely have, and hopefully, as that continues, you know, next year at this time, we won't be saying 35% of the new cases of HIV are a result of injection drug use.
Right.
You know, if we can start to chip away at that, that's the idea.
Yeah. Of the three primary elements of focus of prevention, treatment, and housing, which of those three, if any, I mean, they're all, can be viewed as co-equals, but which of those three, in your mind, is the area of where there has to be greatest concentration and focus moving forward?
I would say prevention, absolutely, because unless we, you know, stop this tide of, you know, this increase in, you know, people converting and being positive, you know, it's just, we're gonna, we're just gonna be inundated as a community.
And some people would say, how on, in the world is prevention still such a primary issue? People know that, at this point, it's unlike when AIDS first came on the scene, and people weren't sure what it was, and how it was transmitted, and those sorts of things, but today, that's all so well-known. Why is, why is there still such a need for a focus on prevention? Or, stated a different way, why, why are people still so willing to engage in risky behavior when they know, or should know, but know what they're doing, and the risks of harm that they're exposing themselves to?
Yeah, I mean, it's, and the CDC has, you know, looked at all these best practices for changing behavior and behavioral interventions, and frankly, most of them don't work. I think, you know, it's a combination of things, and it's very complicated. I mean, one, you know, young people think they're gonna live forever, "That'll never happen to me." But the other piece to this is, there is still so much stigma related to HIV, that it taints how we behave, how people, you know, treat each other, people's willingness to talk about this, come forward, get, you know, get on PrEP, and, I mean, it's unheard, it's unimaginable 20 years ago that we have a drug that can prevent the transmission, that that even exists. Yet, you know, you look at the people who are at risk, and so few people, so few of those people even know that that's a possibility, or that that drug exists, or how to access that. And so, yeah, it's constantly like swimming upstream, trying to get the message out, and the more that we can normalize this, just like any other disease, I think that is our most effective way at chipping away at this.
Last question, Madam President. So following up on all of that, because there's still detractors and naysayers, especially if public money's gonna be involved, I know what the answer is, but I think it bears articulation publicly by you as to why it's so important to spend money on this, when there are those who would say, you know, people are assuming the risk, they're adults, largely, not always, clearly, but adults, and they're willingly, knowingly, intelligently assuming that risk, why should we pay for this? What's the answer to that question?
Yeah, I hear that all the time, and, you know, if you don't care about just humanity, aside from that, just the economics of untreated HIV, it's so expensive. And then particularly when you look at, you know, injection drug use, you know, one case of endocarditis, which is an infection of the heart, which is fairly common in injection drug users, that can result in, you know, the need for a valve replacement, you're talking half a million dollars per hospitalization.
Yeah.
You know, so...
The economics of it, clearly.
Yeah.
And a lot of those costs are borne by the public, whether it's in tax money, or whether it's in higher insurance premiums for medical care, or whatever the case is, those costs are passed on.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, yeah, they're expensive diseases to treat, and it's preventable. So, and if you look at the cost of syringe exchange, it's such an inexpensive program to run. I mean, we've been able to do this without asking for any grant money from anyone, because Hamilton County Health is giving us the supplies. We already had the harm reduction staff, so, you know, it's just, it's been, it's easy. It's not expensive.
Clearly, for those that are in the business, you know what the, but I think, thought it was worth having it articulated publicly again.
Absolutely.
Why we do this.
Yes.
I'd also like to add to what Linda said, that why we do this, in terms of people who are already HIV-positive, is with appropriate care and with housing, people are not condemned to live very sick lives. They can be very healthy, they can be productive and happy and healthy, and that requires some help to get there.
Sure.
And so that's the other reason that we do this.
Thanks.
Yeah, and one valve replacement costs more than an entire year of Hamilton County Health Syringe Exchange Program, so...
Thanks so much.
Madam President.
Thank you.
Oh, we have another question.
Not a question, just a comment. And I think that's what's so great about what you guys do, you're not just focusing on the prevention and the drug use, but you're looking at housing and case management, because as we know, drugs fill in a need, a perceived need, and so when you provide prevention, you also have to fill a gap that they're missing. So you can stop them from using drugs, but if they don't have housing, or employment, or whatever, it's going to be a continuous cycle. So I'm just so happy that you guys are addressing all those areas.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think you're gonna provide a model, because the next frontier, I think, for the heroin coalition is just that. It's that kind of long-term support that's needed for people who have substance use disorder in addition to the kind of work you're doing. So thank you for that. Thanks for being here, we really appreciate it.
Thank you for having us.
I do want to note that my former aide, Nate Simon, was a member of the board at Careco, and was very helpful in scheduling you here today, and I want to note that, and also note that Fatima Ba is in the back of the room. She is my new administrative assistant, and welcome, Fatima, to your first meeting of the county commission. She's waving in the back, so thank you for being here, and welcome to the county. Thank you guys for being here, appreciate it. Thanks for the information. Okay, our next item is related to the dog warden operations. John Brugan, who is our budget director, has graciously taken this on, and provided a report to us in response to a meeting that we had, it's been a number of months ago, related to the dog warden, and how we want to, what we have been doing in the past, and how we want to proceed in the future, related to the services. So John, if you would come forward, please, and give us an overview of the report, we, I assume we all have it, we got it, I think, via email, a couple of days ago, or maybe a week ago. So if you could kind of give us an overview of what we had asked you to do, which was kind of provide a baseline for what we're doing now, compared to other counties and other communities, and maybe some lesson learned there, and then provide us with what do the options look like moving forward, so...
Sure. As you mentioned, we wanted to look at what our operating options were going forward with both stray and humane enforcement. In some respects, we were concentrating a bit on why we are in the minority in terms of using our humane society as the county dog warden. What we found, we looked at nine comparables, we tend to compare ourselves generally to our other urban counties within the state of Ohio, we also looked at our three neighboring counties, those are the nine that we typically look at. We found a lot of operating models out there, almost all of them had some level of collaboration between a government agency and a humane society in providing this relatively broad swath of services. Interesting, I thought one of the interesting things that we found there was that, with the impetus for us looking at this, being a lot of community voiced concerns around humane enforcement, and the question, coupled with the question of why are we in the minority around dog warden services, which is primarily stray enforcement, what we found was that while we are indeed in that minority on stray enforcement, humane enforcement is still a primary responsibility of humane agencies throughout the state. So we see in Cuyahoga, Franklin, Lucas, Stark, Summit, and Claremont Counties, where their humane agency is the primary person who deals, or entity that deals with neglect and abuse issues among animals. The recommendations we came back with really entail trying to look at this as much as we can as a collaborative effort, and we recommended primarily looking at trying to advance more collaboration around humane enforcement between the SPCA and the sheriff's office. You know, we've heard from the community that there are concerns about humane enforcement is not stringent enough, we have heard from the SPCA about their limits as, they are not full-fledged law enforcement officers, and we believe that there is value in getting a closer connection between our SPCA, our humane agents there, and the investigative folks in police, or law enforcement officers within the sheriff's office, so that they can assist one another when we are looking at more egregious or roadblock places where the SPCA, or the humane agents at the SPCA have gotten as far as they can in protecting the animals of the county. That said, we will also, would continue to refine our approach to various things in terms of transparency, and providing public information about the requests, or about the actions of these agencies. And then we are here today, having made these recommendations, to hear commissioner feedback as to where are we going with next steps. What questions, what concerns do you have about our recommendations, and where do we, and where do you want to go next, in terms of both stray enforcement, dog warden work, and humane enforcement? I would note that the report is silent on some other issues that have been voiced by advocates in our community, the report is not intended to be a cure-all or to address all issues, and, you know, that there are other things we would continue to work on among the agencies, not the least of which, and I would point out, is that I think everybody involved in this would like to see some improvement of the kenneling operations at the Colrain facility. I think we would love to see a better kennel there, I think the SPCA would like that, I think we would like that, there's costs involved with all of these things.
Okay, all right, thank you, John. Could you talk just a little bit about the cost associated with the different options?
Yeah, what we're recommending, our recommendation is, would essentially mean engaging further with probably some folks within the investigative section in the sheriff's office. We would have to talk with the sheriff to really nail down cost, whether or not we would be, you know, are we looking at a full, a full-time additional employee, or is this something that would be absorbable within the scope of the... something that would be absorbable within the scope of the existing section within the investigations unit of the sheriff's office? If we were looking at, at adding an FTE there, we might be looking at $150,000 with benefits and support and that kind of thing.
Okay, and then I also note, on page two, there's talk about that and also the kenneling piece, and the, is it six million for that part?
If, if the, if we were to end up with a recommendation where this, where the county would take on all of the, the dog warden operations and have to acquire a kennel and outfit, yes, we would be looking at in the neighborhood of $6 million. That's not our recommendation today.
Okay. No, I'm just trying to nail down some of the costs for the different, it, it might be helpful, because I, I expect this is going to be an ongoing conversation and a dialogue, because we've got some folks here that have signed speakers cards, so we want to hear from them. But if, it might be helpful in the future, if you, being the budget director, if you could line up the different options with the cost associated with, that six million number is huge, you know, and particularly at this moment in time with the county, you know, what that might look like. But, but also, this idea of having the sheriff do either all of or part of what's currently being done, otherwise with the dog warden, and what, what that would look like, you know, what, what this partnership element that you referred to, if we were to keep things as they are with additional transparency noted, and have the sheriff do something in addition to, what's the cost of that? What does that look like? I mean, I think, I personally want to get my arms around the cost of the different options that are being contemplated here in the report, so that we can better evaluate, you know, kind of how we want to move forward.
Right, and ultimately, we didn't, and I can provide that, I actually have it in background on the, the material that we used to develop the report, we just didn't attach it today, but I can tell you that the, you know, from the patrol side of things, we were looking at numbers that were probably roughly equivalent. The sheriff's proposal in terms of cost was roughly equivalent to, to the SPCA proposal for the patrol side of the dog warden section. Kenneling is much more up in the air, because if we were to be able, if we were able to continue the current kenneling operation, we would expect costs that would be about the same. But both entities have said that they, they don't want to do the kenneling operation if they're not, the sheriff's office doesn't want to do the kenneling operation should they take on patrol. The SPCA doesn't want to do the kenneling operation should they not be doing patrol. So, that's very much an unknown, but we think at minimum, we would be looking at capital acquisition in, in the neighborhood of $6 million.
Okay, thank you. All right, before we get to the speakers' cards, are there any comments or questions from the commission?
Madam President, I'd also like the information that you said to be more detailed, so I can take a better look at it. And you were saying that the SPCA has indicated that they do not want to do part of it. They, if they're not doing the kenneling, they don't want to do the enforcement, so when did they, I mean, did they put that in writing, or?
I don't think that's in writing, we don't have any official proposal, this has just been verbally said. I think, I think their perspective is that if, you know, there's been so much criticism around their work on, in this area, that, that they're, they're hesitant about doing half of it and continuing to be open to the criticism.
And as far as I know, the sheriff has not presented any proposal of their own, have they?
We have seen a proposal from the sheriff, yes.
It's in this information?
It's not attached, but we have a copy of it.
Okay, okay, I'd like to see that.
Sure.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Portin?
Madam President, thank you. I'll just weigh in, make it unanimous on the cost issue. We'd like to get a, a breakdown, I think, on all the options, as much of a line item as you can, John.
Sure.
Simply because, to me, one of the things that's not discussed here are shared services opportunities. And so, my first question to you on that is, did you explore, or whether you did or not, do you believe that, on the kenneling side of things, that shared services with the other counties that abut us in Ohio, so Butler, Warren, Claremont, do you see any opportunities for shared services on a kenneling side of things? I mean, I, I could envision, for example, in, you know, sort of the northeast part of the county, somewhat centrally located to our four-county block in southwest Ohio, that there might be an, an opportunity for all four counties to share in costs around kenneling. So, it would reduce that number substantially for us and perhaps for them as well.
We did not look at that, no.
Okay, that might be something that we can delve into in, in the future. Second, from a cost perspective and how we address costs, both in reducing them or in raising funds in order to cover them, I sent an email out around the issue of dog licenses. I know that, that you do reach a, a tipping point in terms of how much each license sells for, where people then just don't license their, their, their dogs. And that's not a good situation either. But do you see any revenue opportunities in the area or arena of, of the sale of dog licenses that where we could up our game a little bit?
We certainly, and it's, it's questionable as to where that, where that, that answer is. Certainly, what we know is that our dog license sales tend to trail. Certainly, the middle-sized counties and many of our comparables on a per diem basis, we're actually slightly better on a per, on a, I'm sorry, per capita basis. We're actually slightly better than Cuyahoga on a per capita basis, but we trail Franklin as well as our, as the smaller or mid-sized counties. So, there seems to be some upside on license sales, but, but it's...
Did you, John, let me interrupt for a second.
Go ahead.
Did you, in, in that analysis, dig deep enough to, to perhaps be able to ascertain why other counties, mid-size, or Franklin, which is larger than Hamilton, why they're doing better at that than we are?
No, we really don't have the detail there. It's, it certainly is, is a combination of, you know, the engaged agencies around licensing, all of them, you know, in, in terms of, you know, promoting that to the public, and there's also an enforcement side of that.
I think that would be helpful to know.
To the extent you do more enforcement, then that also gets the word out there.
Okay, if you could try to provide some digger, deeper dive into that. The other area of license sales that I noticed from your report is that in other counties, there is a reliance, certainly not everyone, but in some, there is a reliance on more local sale or participation in, in enforcement and other elements related to this issue from local jurisdictions. We've got 49 different jurisdictions in Hamilton County. Do you think there's any merit in pursuing that at all?
I, I think that's going to be tough, because it's discretionary for the municipalities, and they are often faced with the same kinds of budget choices we are. So, the, you know, the, the, the primary function lies with the county, and I think it, it's going to be tough to get the municipalities to, to say, oh, we would like to, you know, start our own animal control division.
Last question, something that's very important to all of us as well, and I know to the citizens who've been very actively involved in this issue, is question of transparency in reporting. Any new elements there, any headway made there with respect to the private humane agencies and humane societies and that sort of thing, in a willingness to be more open and transparent with respect to their work?
I would note, only the extent that we did do a, an interested parties meeting in June, and I was, I hope some of the folks who are here today to speak were happy with, you know, getting some of the information that was provided to them there. It was the first time, to my knowledge, that the SPCA has provided specific briefings around specific abuse incidents reports and the outcomes of those reports.
Good.
So, I hope that's a positive.
Well, I hope that continues, that if, if part of the answer here is to continue to contract with and work with the humane agencies or societies, that, that won't just be a once-in-a, once-in-a, a commission-initiated focus town hall meeting, but that that will be a regular part of what they do.
Certainly, the intent is to continue the meeting quarterly, and, and the executive director at the SPCA has voiced, to me, his, his willingness to continue to provide incident reported kind of information once the investigation is concluded.
By the way, I think, and we'd be remiss if we didn't acknowledge, and I know that his work and his legacy, some people felt great about, like anyone in public service, you have your detractors as well, as we all know. But, you know, my condolences, I'm sure the board shares this sentiment, to the family and friends of Harold Yates, and, you know, our sympathies to all of them, and want to publicly acknowledge his work over decades in, in this field, where, whether he did everything perfectly or not, I think that his heart was always in the right place. He clearly cares, cared about animals and dogs, was instrumental in initiating new things, and so, you know, I always respected Harold tremendously, and want to acknowledge his professional lifetime's work.
Certainly the longest...
He leaves behind a, you know, a, a long legacy of service in this arena.
Right, the longest-serving dog warden of the last century in Hamilton County.
Yeah, yeah.
Awesome.
Thank you, Madam President.
So, just very quickly, just piggybacking, so two things that were noted. One is related to the license fee. It, you know, it occurs to me that might not be the amount of the license fee, it might be the volume that's critically impacting the amount of money that we take in.
But we looked at it in terms of volume.
Yeah, okay.
You know, we know what the license fees are, but we, we looked at it in terms of, not, not dollars per capita, but volume.
Yeah.
Number of licenses per capita.
So, again, that kind of detail might be useful. And then this other, this idea about the local jurisdictions, I do want to kind of dig in a little bit, because if the sheriff were to do, you know, provide some, the service, I wonder what the relationship or, or what we need to do with some of the local jurisdictions that do not engage the sheriff, sheriff patrol, and kind of what that relationship or contract or whatever it is looks like. So, I just want to kind of keep that germinating in the back of our minds, so that we don't get too far afield. So, with that, we're going to go with speakers' cards and...
I have a comment also.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. John, if you could help me, what was the rationale for decreasing the locations for purchasing your dog licenses?
The, the auditor's office chose to pull the locations outside of the SPCA and the auditor's office outside of the renewal period. So, there was still a larger number of them during the December and January renewal period, but they were seeing so little volume in the other locations for the other 10 months of the year.
Okay.
That it was, it was a decent amount of work for them to continue to do collections of those small numbers of licenses and fees from those other remote locations during the 10 months that we were not actively in renewal.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for all your work on this issue, too.
Administrator Aluda.
Madam President, thank you. Just, well, first of all, I want to thank John and the budget office for all their work on this over the past couple of months. I, I know they've put a lot of time and effort into it, and, well, we have some areas to address based upon board comments and questions, I just want to thank John for all of his hard work and diligence on it. Secondly, one of the areas that we did not touch on in this report, but has been discussed in some of our past meetings, is just the, the concept of enforcement of humane cases, in particular through the judiciary, et cetera. And over the past couple, and even just very recently, I had a conversation with Pam Sears from the prosecutor's office about this. Pam is, is here today. I don't want to speak for her, but I do know that Pam has taken a hard look at this within the structure of the prosecutor's office to determine whether or not there is some additional attention that can be placed on this in the prosecutor's office to improve the connection between the SPCA, the clerk of courts, the prosecutor's office, to help enhance the enforcement of these cases when they're brought to the prosecutor's office. And I think she has made progress in that area. So, Pam is here, I think, willing to say something if the board would like, but if you would like to hit on that note before we go to public comment, we, we could do that.
All right, Pam, if you don't mind, a couple minutes, because I do want to get the public comment, yeah?
Some of you may know, some in my career of year now, to my city and county time, and there was a time when I, oh, I'm sorry, my city and county time number about 30 years now. I know I don't look that old, thanks for not saying that. In my past life, I ran our municipal division, and in that role, I was responsible for all the misdemeanors outside of the city of Cincinnati, and in that role, I had an ongoing relationship with Harry Yates, who, I don't know anything he did wrong, but I'm not objective about Harry. I had a very active role with Harry, and at that point, Jody Abner, who is chief enforcement officer. We had, I managed and personally was involved in many cruelty prosecutions and investigations. Notably, we seized a lion once from a drug dealer, and Harry and Jody drove it to a sanctuary down in Alabama after we had it forfeited to the county. Once we had it forfeited, I was pretty sure we weren't going to keep it, but, and we interjected in, in several horrendous situations. Not only was, were cruelty prosecutions, were we able to extricate animals from terrible situations, but we were also able to help people who had gotten themselves in over their heads by taking on more than they could handle, or who were involved in substance abuse and mental health scenarios, which you all know impact our forensic community a lot. So, we used those cruelty cases as a vehicle to, to have a lot of intervention and did a lot of good work. In my time running municipal, the municipal division, I would say that Jody Abner and Harry brought me top-notch investigations of cruelty, of inhumane treatment, to the extent, not to insult any of my law enforcement brethren, because I'm pretty pro-law enforcement, as you know, but some of those investigations were stellar. They were better than any investigations I'd ever seen. Recently, I became aware that there's a civil process of registering or designating dangerous and vicious dogs in some, some statutes that have enacted since I became in my current role in the civil division. What we discovered was that the dog warden was, didn't have the support that at least we felt in the prosecutor's office, he needed to navigate through that process. So, to the extent that there were criticisms of the dog warden perhaps in these designations, I have discovered that there were some notification problems of an IT nature that we've eradicated. I've discovered there's some civil procedure kind of support that the dog warden was not getting that we have eradicated by selecting a couple people to devote to the process. So, I'm pretty convinced at this point, at least going forward, that we have interceded in that civil aspect. With regard to the criminal aspect, what I would just offer is that I have served as a, I guess, a benchmark on cruelty cases. Most recently, Mr. Corcoran of the SPCA has consulted me based on my experience, which I have a little bit of, a lot of actually, and he will continue to consult the prosecutor's office. Should the sheriff be, be involved in enforcement, then he would be consulting the prosecutor's office. So, I, I kind of feel we're the common denominator that might help to maybe right whatever's happened in the transition, perhaps, of having someone newly take over the SPCA and, and come into the place where you're not only working as an SPCA, not-for-profit executive director, but you're also wearing a, a law enforcement hat. Harry Yates was stellar at navigating that. It is not an easy place to be. And so, at least going forward, I wanted to indicate it to you and the public, that Mr. Dieters is committed to helping get involved in this transition and see if we can, we can maybe move some of these criticisms forward into, I guess, commendations. I've met with Mr. Corcoran, I understand that he is a mentee of Harry Yates. I can only speak for myself, but that said a lot to me. If you're trained by Harry Yates on what enforcement looks like, if you're trained by Harry Yates on what humane treatment of animals looks like, if you've worked for the SPCA for 30 years and you've come out of that kennel operation to be the chief enforcement officer, I, you've got some confidence from me in your role. And at least he has, Mr. Corcoran's been very amenable to our involvement and, and very appreciative of using us as a sounding board, so I just wanted to indicate that to the board, for, for whatever that's worth to you all, hopefully as we're something. But I, I think that there's a lot of expertise that is centered in the staff of the SPCA, and there certainly should, could be some investigative fluffing up or and/or some advice and expertise of the sheriff that, that might be beneficial. I'm not discounting that. But I did want to say that I've met with Mr. Corcoran, and he's very supportive of our involvement, and I have a lot of confidence in him in terms of his experience and his training going forward. And there've been a couple high-profile cases that involved alleged cruelty that he's run by me and sought my advice on, so...
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for, yeah, thank you for the information, appreciate it. Let's get to the speakers' cards. The first one is related to Harold Yates. Jim Tomaszuski is here. You've got the pleasure of the floor for two minutes.
Thank you. My name's Jim Tomaszuski. I've been a board member at SPCA for about nine and a half years. I'm an attorney, I teach animal law at the College of Law up the Hill. I serve on a couple of state advisory boards with the Ohio Department of Agriculture, and I am a mentee of Harold Yates. So, my purpose in coming down here today is not to, not to comment on, on the, on the report, while I appreciate that and the work put into it. My point in commenting is to make sure that the, the progress that's been made in the past, when Harold Yates started down on Colrain Avenue in, in the early 80s, there were 36,000 animals coming in, about 20% leaving alive. I think it's important to not lose sight of that. We have a, we have a present opportunity to continue to improve the humane treatment of animals in this community, but I don't, I don't want to let the discussions around that opportunity and the nuances of how we move forward to diminish... that opportunity and the nuances of how we move forward to diminish what's been accomplished in this community. That's not all due to Harold Dates. Certainly, he was a leader. But the community members that are here today, those folks have been around for a long time, too. And I think it's that collaboration, those collaborative efforts that have really advanced. And I think that's the, that's the linchpin in what's allowed this community to move forward. And I hope as we continue to have these conversations, we can continue to have them in a civil manner, in a productive manner, and with a little bit of understanding of how far we really have come in the past 30 or 40 years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Diana Frye.
Good afternoon.
Hi. Just a citizen. I just want to talk a little bit about humane reinforcement and how I, why I feel like the Sheriff Department should get involved. This is just an example. I had, there was a property on Colerain Avenue that was housing these dogs in the backyard. It was very inhumane. There was like at least four dogs at a time, and they would rotate periodically. Some of the dogs were injured. They were on very short, heavy tow chains, and their house was considered a barrel. I made multiple calls from the time of December 2017 through January 29, 2019. I made multiple calls to the SPCA, and every time I got a report, that there were no violations because the dogs had water somewhere in the vicinity, and they felt like the dogs were well-nourished, which I have pictures showing that they weren't. There's a dog with like a broken leg, there's a dog with bite marks all over his face. And it took a social media windfall to get some help. It was like sub-zero weather, and you guys are probably familiar a little bit about this case. But anyway, long story short, the dogs were finally taken inside the house. We don't know where the dogs are. This activity could still be going on. And even that day, somehow the owner got tipped off and took some of the dogs when SPCA was coming. But even that day, the dog warden said that there were still no violations, other than the fact that they didn't have tags, and he did get a warning for that. So, I just feel like it would be in the best interest of the animals if somebody could really, truly enforce the animal laws, so.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in. Our next speaker is Beth Sheehan. Good afternoon. You have the pleasure of the floor for two minutes.
Well, could you put them up here so the commissioner? Oh, yes. Sorry. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Beth Sheehan from Mount Washington. Vice President Joe Biden famously said, "Don't tell me what your values are. Show me your budget, and I'll tell you what your values are." So, I've heard criticism of Sheriff Neal that he does not stay within his budget. So, but in the last four years, a million, approximately a million dollars a year, that's $4 million, have been moved from the General Fund to the Dog and Kennel Fund in order to make budget of that contract. That amounts to currently $5,000 a day that the SPCA is getting every day. In 2018, the SPCA reported 3,025 stray dogs. The county contract that year was 1.76 million. That makes $581 per stray dog that the county spent that year. A number of Ohio counties authorize, the county commissions authorize no money at all to the dog wardens. Sheriff Neal, as a dog warden, would be a force multiplier. He has the knowledge, expertise, and authority to enforce not only Ohio dog laws, which the dog warden does, but also all state and federal laws. I encourage you to award Sheriff Neal the dog warden contract to reflect Hamilton County's progressive thinking, planned resistance to county violence, and compassion for our county families and animal friends. I have a lot of comments. I know my two, two minutes are gone, but related to the dog licenses, I've done extensive research on that, and I shared that with your aide, Neil Simon. So, just one example, Hamilton, Montgomery County has 25 off-sites where they sell year-round dog licenses. Hamilton County has one.
Thank you. The next speaker has conceded her time to another speaker, and this is going to happen more than once. So, Catherine Hartung has conceded her time to Lori Ratley. So, Lori, you have the pleasure of the floor for four minutes.
Commissioner Dreehouse, thank you for providing us with this report from Mr. Aludo today. He had not advised us that he had written it or that he had given it to you, even though he knew we were anxiously awaiting it. And now, I think I know why when I read this. I'll tell you what I distill out of this when I look at it very quickly before the meeting today. I see that the expenses, other than the startup expenses for the sheriff, are roughly the same. So, it would budgetarily be possible and is not exorbitantly more than sticking with the SPCA. Then I go on, and I see that the Humane Society is saying, "Well, if we can't have it all, we don't want any of it. We know that we have a shelter that's ready to go to receive the strays, but we're going to be obstructionist, and we're not going to play ball if we can't do the whole thing and keep every single penny." That's what I see in that paragraph. What I don't see, I'll tell you what I don't see. I don't see any mention of the bang you get for your buck with the sheriff. You get multiple divisions. You guys know what they are better than I do. You get investigative divisions. You get drug enforcement divisions. You get a SWAT team. You get a lot of infrastructure. You get a lot of communications, and you get a lot of equipment that the SPCA admittedly doesn't have. And they tell everyone, "I can't go in that home. I can't even make them answer the door. I can't do anything in this case unless I have more, more, more evidence." And they basically admit everything they've done to me. I can't do it because I don't have the power to do it. So, you don't hear anything about that in this report of what the sheriff's office could do with roughly the same amount of money. So, what I also see is that magically, the Humane Society, quote, "has markedly increased citations in recent months, given increased commissioner scrutiny." Is that what you want? An agency that you have to babysit, that you've given millions of dollars to for 50 years, that all of a sudden they've markedly increased their citations? Why is it markedly increased in recent months? They could have been doing this the whole time because they are the society of prevention for cruelty to animals. That's what they're supposed to care about. Why do they need this kind of scrutiny to increase their citations? It's ridiculous. So, I think this report is really ridiculous. And I'll tell you why Mr. Aludo couldn't answer some of your questions today, perhaps. I asked him June 12th during our community meeting if he had the sheriff's budget yet. He didn't because he hadn't asked for it yet. We gave three months that I thought were needed to do a detailed analysis, to really look at what we needed to do here. And one month ago, he hadn't even asked for it. I knew, I already knew that, to be quite honest with you, when I asked him, because I talked to the sheriff myself, and he told me. He's not looking to fire anybody. He's not looking to put anybody on the street. He's looking to absorb as many staff as he can and give them more opportunities within his department. He has a lot of good ideas, and he really wants to work with the SPCA. Arm in arm, raise money together, bring money in from the community together. He wants to do this. We have given you guys ample data, ample examples for two years now. This is going on and on and on, and this is the report that he came up with. I can't say I'm surprised, but I'm appalled. This is horrible.
So, to clarify, the report is not written by Jeff Aludo. It's written by John Brugan, who is the Budget Director and has been-
Sorry, I used the wrong name.
-dogging this for a while. And I personally take offense to your comments, direct comments to, at Jeff Aludo about his expertise on the budget, which I think are not well-founded. So, I appreciate your comments. I would prefer that people don't make personal attacks as they do comment particularly related to a report that was generated by somebody else. And in addition to that, we are more than willing to engage the sheriff on this conversation. But to be clear, we are under a budget crisis, and none of us, I think, would be willing to spend dollars that are not necessary for this function. If we can do it differently, we're clearly open to that. Here we sit. But do not appreciate the personal attacks on county administrations.
I apologize, Mr. Aludo. I know that you didn't write the report. I used the wrong name.
Please refrain from that in the future.
Could I make a comment?
Yes.
Becca?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much for reviewing the report and coming to the conclusions that you, you did. Obviously, you used the wrong name, so I won't hold that against you. But I appreciate your passion and also looking at it to see what's right and what's wrong as it relates to a resident's opinion. So, thank you for what you just said, okay?
Thank you for what you said.
Our next speaker is Eleonora Busco, who has ceded her time to Stacy Grant. So, Stacy, you have the pleasure of the floor for four minutes.
Hi, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Pam Sears, hello. Good to see you, and I do appreciate the Prosecutor's Office becoming involved in this. This is a, definitely a necessary component to any kind of meaningful reform. I have not had a chance to review this. It just did, it just was handed to me, Mr. Brugan's report. I, I understand that there are attachments that were not included, so I'm going to reserve judgment as to its validity. I do question his characterization with respect to the community meeting that we had. I did not feel that it was helpful. In fact, honestly, I'm always frustrated. Every time I think about this situation, every time I look at, at, you know, comments made by public officials, by private officials, by board members, et cetera, I, I'm just getting my feet wet. And admit, I don't know everything, but I, I have, in my own way, tried to piece together just the dynamics of the situation. And since I don't see any of the SPCA executives here again today, I'm going to pretend to be one, and I'm sure they're not going to appreciate my comments because my comments are my interpretation or my characterization of what the SPCA's arrangement, relationship is with the county and how, I guess, what a great deal they have and how easy it is to meet the low bar that the contract with the county has, has repeatedly renewed with them. So, I am the SPCA. I receive 1.8 million a year from Hamilton County to execute dog warden duties. Dog warden duties are narrowly defined, however, so really, I receive 1.8 million dollars a year to enforce dog license violations, collect dog licenses, fees, and pick up stray dogs. Oh, yes. Except I can't really do much about dog license enforcement. I just blame the auditor for non-collection because, after all, it's the auditor who's reduced the number of sites that I can be issued, licenses can be issued anyway. I don't have to worry about collecting license fees anyway because if I don't collect them, the county just pays me out of the general fund. So, really, I receive 1.8 million dollars a year to pick up stray dogs, as Beth Sheehan also noted. How can this be? Well, for one thing, everyone, even the Commissioners as of the last meeting, were all, they're all very confused about what I am required to do under the contract and what I say I do as a private, non-prof entity. Most people assume that my dog warden duties involve abuse and neglect investigations. A vast majority of the public, I can tell you, thinks that it is the SPCA's duty in its relationship with the Hamilton County government to investigate abuse violations. In fact, my phone rings off the hook with calls from, from citizens asking for me to look into abuse cases. However, that contract doesn't involve abuse investigations. All abuse investigations that I do, I do at my sheer discretion. I'm not obligated by any agreement with the county to investigate any case of animal cruelty. If anyone, even the Commissioners, asks about a cruelty investigation, all I have to say to you is, "I don't have to tell you. It's not public information." I'm a 501(c)(3) organization. I'm sure my private donors who give me four, five, six million dollars a year think I'm doing all kinds of great things to end abuse and cruelty in the community. Maybe I am, but I won't tell you about it because it's a 501(c)(3) operation. I have many, many other things to say, and I guess I could, would love to say one thing in conclusion, and that is that the main reason of, the main source of my frustration is that I know there's a wealth of knowledge and experience in this community that could really fix this problem. It has to involve Sheriff Neal in his law enforcement activities, and the contract and the doublespeak that we receive from the SPCA on an ongoing basis is an insult to our intelligence and the intelligence of the Hamilton County Commissioners.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
So, Jeff, I'm going to look to you or John related to some next steps. So, we have asked for some information in addition to what was provided through the report about finances, about the relationship with the sheriff, about, you know, other things ongoing. So, does anybody have anything to add? I expect that we will be dealing with this at a future staff meeting. I feel like it wouldn't take too long to, you know, roll some of that information forward by way of a report. So, I guess my question is about timing, when we can next see this in front of us with some of the information we requested, and then more solid recommendation, perhaps, about how to move forward.
Sure. Thank you, Madam President. So, I think our next staff meeting is July 30th. Is it July 30th? Is that our next staff meeting? So, we think, is that July, July 30th? So, I don't know, John, if that's enough time to... Certainly, I think the budget information, that we have that readily available, we can package that pretty succinctly, I think, by that point. I think there are some next step conversations that we want to have with the sheriff because I do want to, again, emphasize that the recommendation does include some level of enhanced involvement from the county sheriff. So, then one of the next steps was to have that conversation and to discuss how that interaction would occur between the SPCA and the sheriff. I think some of the conversations around shared services may take a little bit more time, just depending upon the feedback that we get from some of the surrounding communities, et cetera. But I think two weeks out, if we want to, if we want to schedule that for two weeks out, we can certainly do an update at that point in time. We were prepared to recommend moving forward more fully with conversations between the SPCA and the sheriff at this point, but I think until the Commissioners' questions are fully answered, I don't know that we want to engage entirely in that yet. I think we want to get the Commissioners' questions answered and then start moving forward on the actual recommendation, so.
And I wonder if, I don't know about this, but if any preliminary conversations could be had just between those two?
We'll have to have some of them, just in terms of moving forward in an execution stage. I don't think we're there yet, so.
Okay, all right. But have some preliminary conversations between the sheriff and the SPCA related to, you know, the duties that we're talking about and any augmentation to that on either front. So, any other foot?
Madam President, if we could have the attachments that are missing, not missing, but we didn't receive before the next Tuesday meeting, that would be great.
The, yeah, the share, the share, the cost, the cost analysis and the sheriff's proposal are largely in hand, and I can just-
Okay. That'd be great. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Portman, anything?
Yeah. Madam President, thank you. First, I want to thank the speakers, all of you for being here. We have had dialogue going on for a long time, as you've acknowledged, and, and I do agree that, you know, final decisions need to be made and answers given. Now, I disagree that there has been no movement whatsoever to the extent that comments either stated that directly or implied that. There has been a lot of movement and a lot of probing and a lot of directives given by this board, especially in the area of transparency and focusing on all of that. The town hall meeting, all of the stuff that's been going on over the past six months has all come about because of our response, having heard from all of you, our response to taking next steps in response to that, to find a workable solution. We do have significant budget issues. We can't overlook the impact of that on what the final solution is going to be here. But you do have- But you do have a board that is willing to work at, and I believe this strongly, whether you do or not, I do, and we're all working to find a solution and to find common ground that is going to allow for a much better implemented, if you will, response to acknowledgement of and fulfillment of our legal and statutory obligations with respect to this. And I would go beyond that and say also our moral obligations with respect to this issue. You know, the humane treatment of animals, defenseless but living, feeling creatures, says a lot about the soul of a community, and so we have an obligation to meet that sense of moral responsibility and obligation, in my opinion. That involves everybody working together. We can be accusatory and yell at each other, that's usually born out of frustration and a sense of a lack of progress, and I understand that. We're all human beings and prone to feelings and the like, but we're going to have to work together on this, all right? I mean, it's going to have to happen, and if we yell at each other, we're not going to find solutions that anybody's going to be happy with. So, I would encourage that, because you've got the board's ear. Whether you agree with the report or not, the report is a starting ground from which to continue the dialogue and continue to work at finding out a workable solution. Now, I've raised one of these, I think, that could help us to reduce costs and provide for better and more humane treatment of animals that are picked up. You know, personally, I believe in no-kill facilities, I hope that that's still a goal within our reach and that we're all willing to work toward that. But it's going to require, I believe, more than us acting on our own, because we simply don't have the money to do that right now. And it's something we can work at, but you're not going to get that answer this year, because we've got a $29 million budget deficit for a whole host of things, and $6 million out of 29 is a lot of money spent on one issue. So, I'd like to see and would strongly urge that we work very hard at seeing what shared services opportunities exist with the counties around us relative to kenneling operations and how that might be able to come into play to make that aspect of this issue more affordable. Second, I believe that the fulfillment of our obligations, be they statutory or moral, cannot occur unless the, those that are implementing that have the power and the force of law behind them. And so, to that end, that either means that we've got to add, and the report says this, and I want to thank the county administration for acknowledging this, they are saying that some collaboration, whether it's as far as you all would like us to go or not, but collaboration with the sheriff in this is a recommended element in the solution. So, we've got to figure out what that all is, what can the sheriff do within a budget that we can afford that's going to introduce and increase that involvement and with it the power and force of law behind it. To anyone that would want to be involved in this, whether it's on a voluntary basis or whether they are a 501(c)(3) or any entity working under any contract with the county, I think that it's up to us to impose policy parameters around the receipt of county money of what we're going to expect in return for the expenditure of those dollars. If you want to serve in this capacity, then you're going to have to do things in accordance with what that contract dictates, included within it, the appropriate degrees of transparency across the board relative to reporting. Now, to tell you the truth, you know, I'm not, for me personally, if it's the SPCA that's involved in this and they've got a lot of experience, I don't want to throw all that out the window. You know, there's a lot of value in those decades of experience. But do I care who their donor base is? I mean, on one sense, in one sense, yes, in another sense, not as much, because if they agree to do the work that we want them to do, I don't want to probe into those kinds of areas that may have an impact on their ability to raise funds and the like. I know that was a chief concern of Jake White in my interaction with Mr. White, when he served in the capacity that he did and when I was president of the board. He pushed back hard on what full transparency meant and what does it mean in terms of getting into their donor base and that sort of thing, and what would they be required to do. But I am very concerned about any unwillingness to be fully transparent when it comes to elements of the activities that we are asking any agency to do, whether that's the SPCA or anybody else. I want to know exactly what they're doing. I want to know that that information is available, it's disclosable, discoverable, reportable, open and transparent, and that has to be a part of any next step as well. So, for me, you know, those are among the elements, basic and primary elements that have to be a part of any solution. And I think we indicated at the beginning of the year that we were moving toward our budget and the adoption of our budget this year as to when final decisions were going to be made, because clearly, this involves a significant expenditure, no matter how you look at it, on behalf of the county relative to the issues of what a dog warden does and what the humane treatment of animals is and all aspects of that. But that's the timetable that I believe that we're operating under, is for this to be determined, decided, we figure out what the collaborative approach is going to be, and that's a part of our budget process and discussion, and will be a part of whatever our adopted budget is for next year during our budget process. But that's how I see things moving forward. I think everybody has come together around that, whether we all agree as to whether, at this stage, that's enough or not enough, whether it can be done or not done. That process isn't finished, it's not completed. We're in the process of discerning now what we can do, but I think the bottom line is, you have stepped forward, you've made a case, we have heard, we've listened, we are taking steps toward addressing the issues that you have raised. We want to work with those who historically have been a part of this process. As the report says, there is an openness to working with the sheriff on this and including the sheriff. How far that goes will probably be limited by budget, and there are policy decisions there as well. But we're moving toward a decision this year to be finalized during our budget process as to what needs to be done. That's how I see it, as just one of three, and again, I thank everybody for their willingness to come together around this issue, and I do believe that, at the end of the day, we're going to have a much better process and a much better operation relative to how our dog warden fulfills the duties of the dog warden and how we deal with the humane treatment of animals and so on in Hamilton County. Madam President, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
Since we're talking about transparency here, I have to be very transparent and say that I'm really disturbed by the brazen attitude of the SPCA as it relates to, if I can't have the whole pie, I don't want any of it. If I can't kennel, do the kenneling, I don't want any of it. And also in addition, it was mentioned earlier by one of the speakers, they have not had a presence here for, we've been talking about this for a few months, and the last I heard, John, he was on, somebody was on vacation. But as far as somebody representing, other than a board member, the SPCA, and, you know, in case we have questions or input or if we, you know, want to comment, they have not even showed up. So, this sense of entitlement is something that really disturbs me.
If I may, I will, I will say that they have asked repeatedly whether or not they need to be here, and I have advised them that they don't necessarily need to be here.
Okay, let's have them here.
So, I'm happy if you would like them to hear to answer questions, I would be happy to express that too.
Yeah, and actually, you know I always ask questions, John, so, yeah.
I'm always hesitant, Jake, again, is out of town this week, I'm hesitant to pull Brandon in if he can be out there, you know.
Somebody, somebody, yeah, I appreciate it. So, thank you for that clarification.
Yes.
Madam President, just very briefly, again, so we'll follow up with the questions that the board has asked and get those back promptly so that we can schedule this for the soonest possible staff meeting. I do also want to thank all the speakers that have come in today and for the discussion. Normally, I would save this for some conversations with the board afterwards, but just in general, because I know we have people who watch from home as well, who kind of watch the machinations of local government, county government, I just want to take this opportunity just to very briefly say that, you know, from my perspective, the administration, and this goes to all my staff and department heads, the job of the administration is to make a recommendation to the board. That recommendation has to balance a lot of things, has to balance cost, quality of service, effectiveness of the service. We've talked about budget constraints, the policy direction of the board, which can come from multiple different angles. People aren't going to always agree with those recommendations, and we understand that, but there is a starting point for the board. I've asked my staff and directed my staff that when we bring stuff, bring issues before the board, that we make recommendations. Our job is not to provide a multiple choice test for the board so that we're swimming around with various options without any direction forward. So, we will continue doing that. Again, if the board wants to go a different direction from a policy perspective, we're always capable of doing that. So, just again, I want to thank John for his time and his expertise on this, and we look forward to the continued conversation with the board and obviously with all the stakeholders that are involved with this.
Thank you. Yeah, and as I mentioned at the top of the conversation, this is a dialogue that we're having with the interested parties, not really on either side, I think it's, you know, a collective conversation, we're trying to figure out the right thing to do in a cost-efficient way. I mean, that's what we're trying to do, and this conversation's been going on for about a year now. So, I appreciate your patience, I note your frustration, but we are trying to get to a good resolution. So, that is the purpose of, a sincere purpose of this commission and, you know, just taking us a minute to get there. So, we will notify you and John, the other folks, if they could be in the room. I think the sheriff obviously should be here too, to kind of round it out. So, whatever form that takes, I think that would be a useful exercise to get everybody in the same room. I call it an interested party, we can do it in that venue or in this venue, it doesn't really matter. So, thank you for that, thank you all for being here. Our next two orders of business are executive sessions.
Madam President?
Yes.
Before we get to that, may I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Thank you. And this is a question to county administration and to the budget office. It's my understanding that Thursday night at our board meeting in Forest Park, there may be citizens who will be showing up relative to the issue of the ongoing prosecution of Judge Tracy Hunter. I have, in the past, opposed the expenditure of money on the ongoing prosecution of this case, given certain outcomes and the like. I'd just like to ask in advance of Thursday night, Jeff and John, if you could detail for us what the total expenditures have been, just so that we have that information on hand, both with respect to payments of outside counsel, payments for court reporters and other expenses related to that, payments for both out-of-pocket as well as if we're able to get any approximation from the prosecutor's office about how much time and what the time value of that has been in terms of these ongoing efforts, both the original trial and then all matters beyond that, if you can. I know that this exercise was done already once before.
As I say, I think we've done some of that in the past.
So, it's probably, probably should be able to just pick up from there and just add to it. I don't think it's going to be as big of an exercise as it might sound at first blush.
I can't recall what we've produced in the past, but we can certainly refine that, and if there's a problem, we'll look for it now.
Yeah, I just, I certainly can imagine that those questions are going to be raised Thursday night by citizens who I understand are going to be at the board meeting wanting to delve into this issue, and I think that, to the extent that we can be prepared in advance with having that information, it will be helpful to both the conversation and, you know, what, if anything, we may, you know, may want to do. And that includes the whole gamut of things, from doing nothing to commenting to anything related to budget questions, but I'd just like to have that information on hand, if we could. Madam President, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, I will move that we go into executive session pursuant to RSE Section 121.22-G3 to conduct a conference with an attorney concerning pending litigation and another executive session pursuant to RSE Section 121.22-G3 to conduct a conference with an attorney concerning MSD.
Second.
Mr. Drina?
Yes.
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 Jeff, did you want to indicate two other attorneys?
Yes, I'm sorry, just so, just for the listing on item number three, we're also adding Mr. Tom Gabelman and Tom Allen to that conversation as well.
Duly noted. Thank you.
[inaudible][1681.53]